Gernat. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Mr. President.
Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing by your invitation from Councilmember Pete Patterson.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll just take this time to thank all of our Public Works crews and first responders who've been out working hard today and doing a better job on our streets. We very much appreciate their hard work. I also have a bit of good news for our Public Works Department in that it appears that Punxsutawney Phil this morning did not see his shadow, so we're gonna see it early spring.
And if you believe that, though.
City Clerk served by publication, excuse me, the Daily Record, the official newspaper, on January 29th. Notice where pre-council and regular city council meeting in February 2nd, 2016. Be quiet, Moses. A current copy of the opening act is posted on white binder on the East Wall of the legislative chambers.
This Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public.
The applicant by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During the testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud nor convey disapproval. These actions detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic devices. And I was just informed that today is our city clerk, Buster Brown's birthday, so we'd like to...
Can we sing?
No, God no.
We better not sing.
No, no, no.
Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, dear Buster. Happy birthday to you.
All right, we're destroying the quorum of the meeting here.
We're destroying the decorum.
That goes the formative.
Yep, that's right. That's right, I was...
Mr. Clerk.
Zoning orders on final ring and planning board attachments. Item number five. Orders to rezone property located southwest of Coventry Drive and V Street from Development Reserve District to mixed-use district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none of their proponent?
Yeah. Thank you for coming. Hi, my name is J.F. Carter. I'm with CFM Realty. Address 1823 Harney Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68102. I'm here to answer any questions if anybody has any comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Soon as I see the screen, there's no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Five is passed, seven to zero. Item six. Orders to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for legacy to allow a broadcast tower located 17677 Wright Street, providing site development standards. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. I think this is the one they want to lay over.
Well, no. Actually, if there's no amendment, they don't... There's no amendment, there's no reason to lay it over.
Okay, all right.
Second.
Moved and seconded. To move the approval, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Six is passed, seven to zero. Item seven through 10 are one. Case seven is ordinance to rezone property located northeast of 192nd and Sailor Streets from Agriculture District to Development Reserve District Eight to rezone to R4 Single-Family Residence District High Density. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Nine is resolution to the platent titled Indian Point Phase Two is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And ten is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items seven through 10 are today. Proponents, please.
Doug Kellner, TD2, here on behalf of the applicant. Will answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Seven through 10 are passed, seven to zero. Pursuit, City Council Rule 78. Do no meeting being held February 16th. Agenda items number 11 through 12 shall be laid over three weeks to February 23rd for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 78, agenda items number 13 through 14 shall be laid over three weeks to February 23rd. Liquor, item number 15 and 16 go together. Fifteen is McFly's Center Street Tavern, 4503 Center Street. Class C liquor license to application, no location. Sixteen is a catering license for the same applicant, the same location.
Public hearing on agenda items 15 and 16 are today. Proponents, please.
My name is Vicki Hyman. I reside at 56 Ginger Cove. I am applying for the license for McFly's.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Vicki, the neighborhood's excited to have you. You're...
I'm sorry?
The neighborhood nearby, Morton Meadows to your north, and Beal's neighborhood to your west, are excited to have you take over. And I know the Morton Meadows neighborhood even hosted their meeting at the place last week. So you're stepping into some tall shoes there to fill, and just want to wish you luck and...
Thank you.
...encourage you to continue to be a part of the neighborhood associations around there.
Correct, correct.
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Seventeen through 21 are passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items number 22 through 27 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-two through 27 are adopted, seven to zero. Resolution, item number 28. Resolution that the Old Market South CRA located generally as Pearson, Pacific Street on the north, 10th and 6th Street on the east, Castalar Street on the south, 16th Street on the west, is hereby declared to meet the standards of a substandard and blighted area in need of redevelopment in compliance with the requirements of the Nebraska Community Development Law is hereby designated a community redevelopment area. A is a communications for the Dollman Neighborhood Association in support.
Public hearing on agenda item 28 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley, City Planning. The Old Market South Community Redevelopment Area Designation is this boundary in yellow. The boundaries are basically Pierce and Pacific Streets on the north, 10th and 6th Streets on the east, and Castalar Street on the south, 16th Street on the west. The area is about 277 acres total, and the census tract blocks and groups that are involved are census tract 21, block groups one and two, and then census tract 23, block group two. This comes about as we've had some requests from the development community to take a look at this area for redevelopment. They have some interest in redeveloping areas, and they would need the use of tax increment financing. And the first step in using tax increment financing is making sure that the area is in a community redevelopment area, or CRA. Some of the qualifying conditions of this particular area are deteriorating structures, poorly defined street layouts, buildings that have outlived their usefulness, safety of structures, maybe even abandoned structures, unemployment levels that are greater than 120% of the statewide unemployment rate. For example, using the 2010 census, the state unemployment rate was 5.7. In these areas, the unemployment rate was 9.3, 9.6, and 10%. And then per capita income levels that are lower than the incomes of the city overall. And again, using the 2010 census, for Omaha, the per capita was about $27,167 annually or per capita. And then the range for these same census tract block group areas was $13,300 or, excuse me, $13,687 up to about $18,998. So in the community development law, it specifies that these areas must meet the conditions of blighted and substandard. And when our planning department staff did their study, it did qualify. So I would ask that you would approve this CRA designation.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. The motion... Oh, Dr. Thompson.
Yes, just a quick question, Bridget. Typically, we only need one of those criteria to be met.
Correct.
And in this case, we have five of them met, right?
Oh, one, two, three, four, five, six, at least six.
Six of them, okay. So definitely, the law was made for areas like this.
Correct.
And we need to do everything we can to help this area.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Jerem. Are you done?
Go ahead.
Yeah, if the area appears to be roughly half in District Three, half in District Four, one need only drive around there to see the conditions that are existing to...
Definitely.
...to say in terms of TIF eligibility through the CRA that we're doing here today, this is in significant need of help to redevelop the area.
Yes. And we do drive the area. You could say we do like a windshield survey, but we are driving the area to get a good look at the physical condition of the geographic area. So I would agree.
I also know that it's an area that has a higher percentage of Native American, too. So it's important to make sure we serve that community.
No further lights, is there? A motion?
We do approve.
Moving and seconded. No further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-eight is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 29. Resolution that the contract with Sherman Williams Company for paint, for pavement marking and crosswalks is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item 29 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. A motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. No further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-nine is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 30. Resolution that the bid from De novo Constructors to furnish all labor materials, equipment necessary for the demolition of the Civic Auditorium, 1804 Capital Avenue is hereby accepted. A is a document submitted by Ted Becker representing Anderson X-Gating, and B is a document submitted by De novo Constructors.
Public hearing on this agenda item was held on 1/26/2016, but the De novo wasn't here at the time, and we wanted to give you an opportunity to make whatever presentation you wanted. And then if there were any questions after that, we wanted to get those questions answered.
Thank you, Mr. President. Todd Whitehead, Woods and Aiken, 10250 Regency Center, Omaha, an attorney at Woods and Aiken, representing De novo Constructors. I have also present today Mr. Bill Baxa, who is the head of the demolition division of De novo. Raise your hand or stand up for us, if you will. Mr. Dominic De Silvio, who is the lead estimator at De novo Constructors, Inc. I also have present here Heather Pierceall, who is a project manager and estimator at New Horizons LLC, which is an abatement contractor, which is an SEB Tier Two qualified abatement contractor. And to her right is Mr. Dustin Hunic. I'm sorry if I pronounce that wrong, but he is also a project manager and estimator for New Horizons LLC, which is the SEB-approved contractor. I know there were some questions that came up, and this was passed over for our opportunity on this, in particular for the SEB requirements. I know that was one of the issues. It was not a requirement of the bid package. However, the New Horizons has hired, has been hired, excuse me, to do the asbestos removal for the civic demolition. That's about 25% of the overall contract price, which would put way over the quota or not the quota, excuse me, the goal, if you will, that currently exists. Bad language on that one, I apologize. But with respect to this particular project, they'll meet that goal and be over that. They've also met, I know the representatives from De novo have met with Mr. Spencer Danner from the Director of Human Rights and Relations Department to look for other opportunities on subcontractors for those particular goals and other ways we can subcontract work for that work that's oncoming. With respect to the licensure, they're currently authorized to conduct business in Nebraska. That's not an issue. The only other licensure requirement for this type of work is just the licensure with the Department of Labor for the workers' comp and to make sure that that form, and I think it's $40 in to fill out a form. Traditionally, that's done after the award has been approved so that there's a contract. That will be done in this case. Available for any other questions that you may have from myself or any of the folks that I have here today.
Thank you. We have a couple of lights on. Mr. Gernat.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. I'll get you in a minute.
Sure.
Mr. McGruder here?
Spencer McGruder, 1524 Cummings.
You testified at our last hearing, and I understand that you have some new information, not going over what we had before. If you have something new, I'll allow you a couple minutes to enter it into the record.
Thank you. I'd like to address the timeframe that the legal department put forth of possibly a six-month delay. There are ways of mitigating that risk to the schedule, to the development schedule, by setting conditions within the contract documents that will allow the city to transfer that risk back to the contractor. And just from my rough calculations, the demolition contractor would be able, with the right conditions, would be able to absorb up to six months of delay, okay? So don't let the red herring of it's going to delay the ultimate $300 million development that follows the demolition sway your judgment in not honoring the city's commitment to the economic inclusion program. And I'll give you an example, just so I'm not being vague. Within the contract documents, you set a work period of time. All the bidders basically compose their bids on that. It was 12 to 12, Monday through Saturday, okay? That's what the bid was comprised off of. Their schedule, everything was based on 12 to 12, Monday through Saturday. Because of the uniqueness of the structure, okay? A lot of the interior, all of the interior demolition and all of the asbestos abatement could be done on a 24-hour basis. So if you say that during the interior work, not piercing the exterior veil of the building, okay, you will allow them to work 24 hours a day, three shifts, or however they choose to attack it, okay? And let's say it takes six months, that timeline is six months. Well, by working twice as many hours that were allotted in the base bid or in their original bid documents, you basically cut that time in half. So there's three months right there, okay? And if you open up the opportunity for them to work Sundays, okay, on an 18-month schedule, there's another 78 Sundays. So there's another six months or 60 days, two months. So now, we've narrowed that down to the only thing we're talking about is a month, possibly a month delay. And if legal and the departments expedite the process of rebidding, you can absorb that month. So the six-month delay, it's not real because there's ways that you can mitigate that within the contract documents. So I would encourage you to please honor what the city has stated in their policies and procedures is a priority, which is economic inclusion, do it the right way. No one can contest if you do it the right way. What's happening now is you've gone off track, and I'm not unsympathetic to your position, but you're on a slippery slope, okay? The economic inclusion has a priority list. Tier One, ESB's first priority. Tier Two, ESB's second priority. Tier One, SB's third priority. Tier Two, SB's fourth priority. You just can't jump over to and say, because I want ESB's, I'm just going to pick Tier Two SB and to the detriment of the Tier One, the progression that you have in your plan. That's inherently unfair, okay? And what I'm saying is, let's not get ourselves in a situation where any one of those categories can challenge this in court because that becomes an unknown that nobody can manage. So with that, if you have any other questions for me, I'll be available.
Thank you. Todd? Just restate your name for the record.
Todd Whitehead, Woods and Aiken.
Just one question. Are you aware of any outstanding legal obligations or concerns that your client may have that could have the potential of some liability with the city of Omaha based on this contract?
I guess you're going to have to be more specific for me. I don't have any concerns that my client is exposed to any legal liabilities at this time until it's approved ultimately, and then there's a notice to proceed. And then obviously, they'll have the contractual obligations to fulfill the scope of work within the obligations that are required within the contract.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Becker?
Ted Becker, 11225 Davenport Street, Suite 100.
As I had mentioned, you have testified before as Mr. McGruder. If you have some new information, I'll allow you a few minutes to bring that to our attention. If you have handouts, please give them to the clerk, please.
Thank you. I do have some additional information that I've started to accumulate over the past 24 hours, and so I'd like to make it part of the record, and then I discuss it.
Is that one of the numbers?
After learning what De novo's principal place of business was once the Secretary of State Registration popped up, I think it was Thursday or Friday, I did some further inquiries into the company. And just to address one of Councilman Paul's concerns, because I didn't have an opportunity to address it last week, actually, if you look at their website, they don't identify Chicago as the principal place of business. They identify eight different websites. When I pulled various bid tabulations that they had done on other projects, they identified themselves as coming from Batavia, Illinois. I think that's some small town. And then they're registered to do business in Nebraska. So the point was, I didn't want you to think I was misleading anyone. It's important because Chicago has a resident bidder preference statute. In Chicago, there's a preference and part of the packet. I put in the ordinances, Rahm Emanuel's press release about Chicago First, the Chicago ordinance that says, Chicago, the city, has a resident bidder statute that says automatically resident bidders get a 2% preference over out-of-state bidders. It corresponds thereby, meaning under our resident bidder state statute and ordinance, there'd be an automatic 2% preference to Anderson or any other local contractor. But in connection with digging further in that regard on exactly where, and the reason why it's important is Batavia didn't have a resident bidder statute, but Chicago does. But in doing some more digging, I've discovered there are a series of lawsuits against De novo and the principals of De novo that are pending. And it's just in the jurisdictions I've been able to identify in other courts. The lawyers here may know that it's not really easy to access the lawsuits and the judgments in other jurisdictions. You've got to know where the county is that they sued. You have to have the ability to access it. But I pulled some federal cases that are pending. Literally right now, pending is a claim by De novo's bonding company in New York asserting that De novo has had dishonored checks to subcontractors and suppliers, one in excess of $200,000, that they are presently facing over $2 million in claims. Their bonding company is asserting that not only are they on the hook for $2 million, and they're asking for a judgment against De novo for that amount, they're asking De novo to post collateral in excess of $2 million. And in that complaint, they talk about expecting further claims. That is pending as of January. There is a new deadline set in part of the attachment for February 12th for De novo to respond further. But that is a huge red flag. When you have your own bonding company saying, "We have $2 million plus of claims. We want you to post $2 million of collateral," and what you're proposing to us is insufficient, that is a major red flag for any contractor. Also, as part of the package, is a judgment entered January 15th, 2016, in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Illinois, that found that they had failed to pay the Pension and Laborers Fund $36,000 and entered a judgment against De novo in favor of the Labor and Pension Fund, and further ordered a bond in the amount of $50,000 to be posted by the principal of De novo, Mr. Markoff, and the company. There's another judgment that I have in there from October 2015 from Indiana, where a default judgment was entered against them for in excess of $200,000. A turnover order was entered and a garnishment. So basically, someone else that employed De novo got sent a garnishment and was directed to turnover funds that would otherwise pay De novo so that this default judgment got satisfied. There are a series of other lawsuits in Cook County, literally totaling tens of thousands, or excuse me, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And some are registration of foreign judgments. Anyone with a filing fee who's getting higher or lower can go file a lawsuit. But when you've gone the extra step of actually securing the judgment, that's significant. And there are several in Cook County, Illinois, which would be their base as Chicago. They're from, in addition to lawsuits, they're 2015, 2016, and they look in the nature of subcontractor and supplier claims. I have some other ones from Kane County, Illinois, where I think Batavia is, another subcontractor had a $200,000 or several thousand-dollar claim in September of 2015. There are several from Missouri. There's a federal district court lawsuit attached which talks about complaints about their negligent performance of a cleanup project in Missouri, albeit under a different name. It identifies Mr. Markoff and De novo So that's concerning. And I'm sure that someone might get up here and say, "Well, we'll make sure there's a bond. We'll be protected." But that doesn't protect the city. You had a bond on the WB projects, and you paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to the bonding company to complete that work, and you paid $650,000 to WB at the end of the day. You had bonds on the livestock yard project... You had bonds on the livestock yard project, and you paid over a million dollars in change orders. I did the public record request for those change orders years ago. There was 12 or 13. And again, it was the same situation where a couple contractors came here and said, you got to be concerned about this job. There's question marks here. And the city went with a low bid, and it came back to bite them. And there were literally, I think, over a million dollars of change orders. I don't know if Councilman Thompson or Grenat were on council at that time, but I'm sure you recall the change orders on that project. It was the same thing. People came here questioning the bid submitted by a contractor, raised questions. And I don't think, no one necessarily did anything wrong. I think it's just a matter of due diligence. I haven't even had the opportunity to dig as far as I would in a normal situation. This is just sitting, you know, in an hour or two pulling some stuff that's accessible off the Internet. There's some other concerns I have about just the bid itself. When I went to go bid, pull the bid sign-in sheet to see who showed up, Anderson Excavating sent four contractors. The third bidder, Spiritus from St. Louis, has over 50 years of experience, sent two. De novo sent one. And it's part of the, I submitted it as part of my package. De novo's, Mr. De Silvio signs it, but he doesn't identify himself as de novo contractors or constructors, the real name. He calls it de novo construction services, Inc. Now, I thought to myself, that's odd. How would you not get the name of your company right? This is just in December of 2015. So I did a quick search on Mr. De Silvio. If you look on the Internet, and of course, he may have accepted employment by de novo, I don't know, and he may be a perfectly fine gentleman. I have nothing disparaging to say about him personally because I don't know him. But if you look at him, he shows up as related to DMD Construction Services, a demolition contractor out of North Lake, Chicago. You put in DMD Construction Services and Mr. De Silvio into some searches, and again, they're attached as part of this complaint, there are literally millions of dollars of judgments against Mr. De Silvio and DMD Construction Services. So I'm not sure what's going on here. On the Internet, he's related to DMD. There are lawsuits and litigation-related DMD with pleadings as recently as December of 2015. And he signs in under a different name that's not quite equates to de novo's name at the pre-bid meeting where all the contractors show up. And again, that's just one of those things. It's a red flag. It's what's going on here? We've done our due diligence to check these guys out. You couple that with, they don't have the contractor's license, they weren't registered to do business, and with all due respect to the statements about, we can take care of it, and I know that's done a lot. People do take care of it. But on big projects, when you're bidding Department, State Department of Iowa or NDO or a project, part of your bid package is to show them that you're registered to do business. That's one of the items that you include is your registration or your certificate of authority. And so even though we may waive it, it is important, and other contracting entities take it seriously and expect compliance. And as of the date of the contract, you're being asked to approve January 5th, 2016. That's the date they signed it. They weren't registered to do business. They didn't have the contractor's license. I think that just dovetails into all these other concerns. Another thing that just stood out to me, I had the opportunity, Mr. Brown was nice enough to give me a copy of what had been submitted by de novo. And what really stood out to me is a line in de novo's submittal that says, de novo has been informed that the city may have additional work related to the existing parking structure that may require a city contractor's license. I discussed that with Anderson Excavating. This additional work is not part of the bid documents, and yet we're already forecasting a change to the project. Now, I respectfully submit that that runs contrary to the intent of public bidding. You're supposed to lay it out there. If you even know about a proposed change before it's even let, that affects the public bidding process. That's contrary to the spirit and intent of public bidding.
Want to wrap it up?
Okay. I think what the council can do, I think there's enough questions, and again, I'm just pulling this. If I would have had more time, maybe there's more stuff. The council is authorized, and you've done it in the past, to reject all bids. And you can ask the clerk, and you can ask Attorney Kratz. You guys did it on the demolition project for the performing arts project. There was a fight between Dor and Anderson as to who was low bidder, who qualified. Dor's had got thrown out in Gallup. To avoid that same fight, the city rejected all bids and ordered it rebid. And my recollection is, it was about a 30- to 60-day process to get it all done and get it started again, once the city declared, we're rejecting all bids, and ordered it bid anew. In the bid documents, it expressly says, the city can reject any or all bids. You have an ordinance that says you can reject any or all bids. I think Anderson's the lowest in responsive bidder, but there's enough issues out here with already having potential changes on the horizon, in addition to the failure to comply with the statute that Spencer McGruder's talking about, Section 10, 200.3, which says, every city contract should comply with this program. And that wasn't done in this case. I think the best alternative is to rebid it. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd, would you like to rebut? Michelle, you'll be in the on-deck circle?
I don't know exactly what the council's view is with respect to the comments made by Mr. Becker concerning the disparaging remarks regarding de novo and its businesses. De novo's a very large contractor, has offices all throughout the central and eastern states. If it's got some lawsuits, I'm sure that those will be handled in the court system appropriately. With respect to this particular bid, they have met all the requirements required by the state and local law with respect to this bid process. They have procured and provided the bid bond and the performance and payment bonds necessary to cover this work. With respect to the very large numbers thrown out by Mr. Becker, I think large is a relative term when you're talking about a very large contractor. $2 million sounds like a lot, but in the grand scheme of things, if there's $2 million in total lawsuits out there, it may be a very small thing. You can look at local contractors. Keywood is a great example of that, of which those would be small numbers. I'm not here to address and respond to every claim with respect to some lawsuit that may be existing in other jurisdictions. They have met the requirements under this particular bid situation. They're the lowest responsible bidder. It's a slippery slope to start changing the system, if you will, that the state requires for the bid process that's been around for the lowest responsible bid. And the bonding is the background check that's necessary under the current law. There's lots of different views about what the law should be, but the law simply is that the process that was currently utilized, they were the lowest responsible bidder, and we would ask that the council approve this particular award bid so that the notice to proceed can follow and the work can get started.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Michelle Peters, Deputy City Attorney.
You were here from the beginning of that discussion. My question for the Law Department. In the past, I've seen a lot of, or my share of due diligence done by various organizations, including the City of Omaha Law Department. Anything that was mentioned by Mr. McGruder and Mr. Becker, any of that come across during the Law Department's review and process that they partake in for this particular bid?
Well, again, with regard to the SEB requirements with due respect to Mr. McGruder and Mr. Becker, the ordinance says that there's not a requirement in every case, that we should make best efforts to do so. But at the end of the day, it's always up to the department to determine whether SEB participation is in the best interest of the city and the department, looking at, you know, the capabilities and capacities that are available of the SEBs as well as financial considerations. So from that regard, again, we talked a little bit about that in pre-council. With regard to this particular project, it's a little bit unique, and then it's not a construction contract, so there aren't as many opportunities for SEB participation that you would have in construction with regard to plumbing and electrical and some of those things. With regard to demolition contracts, they're much more precise. So that would be one thing I would talk about with regard to that. With regard to looking into how many lawsuits are pending, that has never been part of the due diligence that I'm aware of with regard to awarding of any contract.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And also, a big thank you to the de novo folks for braving Mother Nature and coming down today and coming into town and sticking around and talking to folks. Appreciate that very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask or call attention, Mr. McGruder. I just wanted to make sure you were aware, because maybe we kind of got, maybe it didn't get noticed, but de novo actually prior to today had already engaged in hiring an SEB a tier two from here in Omaha, and it's actually 25% of their project, which is actually much higher than is even required under our current law. And I think that Councilman Grenat had purpose of calling you up with, did that make you feel better? Because at this point in time, they're actually doing more than we would have required if we put it out to bid.
Spencer McGruder, 1524. While it's great that de novo is reaching out to SEBs, I still fall back on the process. There's a reason why the process articulates priorities, because it's focused on the area that has the highest poverty. Those are the tier ones. They should get first crack at it. You just can't jump to a tier two because it's convenient, or tier two SB. They're fourth in the priority list, okay? And so, and one other thing is, it's not project-based, it's solicitation-based. Every solicitation has to go through this process. And so...
Well, and I appreciate that. I just, so your answer would be no, the fact that they're doing 25% of the project with an SEB doesn't change your opinion?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. Thank you. And I do think at this point, it's rather moot, and we discussed it. Not every project is necessarily, can necessarily be, have the SEB component because there are certain projects that are maybe more specialized in. And we did discuss that this morning, that I think Public Works has a good hold on that because they deal with so many of these projects. But we've also discussed working in the future with the Human Rights and Relations Department that really wasn't around, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Danner, but I think initially when this bid was processed, Mr. Danner maybe had just started. So we have discussed in the future, maybe making it a little more streamlined for the other departments that don't necessarily have Heather Tiddy Pierce watching out for all of these contracts that, if it is a special contract, which is an exception to the rule, where they're not going to have the SEB component, that it goes through Spencer Danner or one of his people hopefully to look at and kind of sign off on so we don't run into this. I think where we're at right now is, we now have a process for other departments in addition to just Public Works to kind of ensure that this isn't being overlooked. But that, we do have certain RFPs that go out that aren't necessarily included in this that Public Works will look at. But in this case, it looks like de novo has kind of made that a moot point. In fact, the normal 14%, they're now doing about 25% of the project. And it is, it's, I believe, is it the asbestos removal? Could we, could you come back up and verify that?
Yes, it is. It's the asbestos abatement for the project.
Asbestos abatement. And I'm assuming there's not a whole long list of people to choose from that can do that in Omaha.
Well, I can ask, I can ask somebody from New Horizons because they would know their competition better than...
Sir, would you give your name? Just your name?
Todd Wydeman, sorry.
That's okay.
Dustin Hunic with New Horizons. In the state of Nebraska, there's probably 10 contractors that would be large enough to do something like this. So locally, there's probably five or six different contractors.
Okay. But most of them would be the, would most of those be a tier two SEB, as far as you know?
I wouldn't know.
You wouldn't know?
Yeah.
Okay. But you are one of the certified SEBs on the City of Omaha.
Correct. Yep. We are a tier two.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And Mr. Becker?
Ted Becker, 11225 Davenport Street.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that, too, that we don't have an ordinance, because I think that that might have been a little more misleading, that requires every single RFP that goes out, RFQ that goes out, to have the SEB requirement.
I appreciate that observation. I think 10-200.3 indicates the city shall make every good faith effort feasible to utilize small and emerging small businesses in all city contracts. I think Spencer McGruder did it well last time when he pointed out how many qualified people. And just one other observation about this, kind of after the fact, after you know that you're going to do it, to go out and get someone to kind of sway the city council. For what it's worth, Anderson was reaching out to New Horizons, and I think New Horizons could confirm this weeks ago, before de novo even contacted them, which I understand was yesterday. So that's a little bit contrary to the public bidding process when you say, hey, you're the low bid. Now, I know it's lowest and best bid, but if you reach out and you get a minority contractor, we'll wink our eye, turn our head, whatever, and we'll ignore our ordinance, and we'll, if you promise to do it...
Okay. Well, since I guess, I think maybe you and I just disagree then on the interpretation of the ordinance. And I guess that, right now, is there anybody that could answer the delay in the project? Ms. Peters?
Michelle Peters, Deputy City Attorney. Again, I think as Mr. Kratz said last week, I don't believe that the way that things are in front of the city council, that you have the right to deny all the bids. I think the only thing in front of the council is the approval of this bid. If you deny this bid, then again, it would go back to the department, the Parks Department, and they would have to look at it, and they would be, they would have to then determine to either go to the next low bidder or to reject all bids. If they reject all bids, then in order to put that back out for rebid, specifications have to be changed. And so that would take a rework, right? That would take, you know, several months to do that. Again, there's the process of then putting it out for bid through the purchasing division. There's a question and answer period that allows the bidders to ask questions, and then the bidding process, and then again, it comes back to the department and they do the analysis. So again, that could be three months, it could be longer, it wouldn't be a couple of weeks, I can tell you that. And then the way things are progressing now, obviously, here we are in early February. If the contract is awarded today, then I believe de novo is prepared to start with asbestos abatement as soon as the notice to proceed is going, is approved. So they would start work inside, get asbestos going, get that interior work going, and then come April, they would have their mobilization unit, they would have equipment here, and they could start going right away on the exterior work. Again, we delay that by three months. That pushes everything back. And of course, we get then into the fall and the winter, there's not going to be, you know, any type of exterior work done there due to weather conditions. So, you know, and really to get the good summer month work period, it's imperative to get this going as quickly as possible.
Okay. Thank you. And I don't know if anybody could, I don't know, Mr. Seabee or could actually talk about this, but I know we just had, the building commission just put out bids for the renovation of the courthouse, and we had wanted all of the work to be done on evenings and on the weekends to try and not disturb court proceedings. weekends, to try and not disturb court proceedings and trials going on. And when we ended up getting the bids back, the bids were so high, we didn't even have enough bonding power to pay for the project. It was millions over what our engineer estimates were, and we said, why, why was that? It's the cost of labor, of having the third shifts and the weekend shifts. It took the cost of the project to a point where we had to make the decision either not to do it, or to try and work around having it done during the day. And so, Mr. Sebey, am I wrong, that this project wouldn't necessarily be any different? And if we were, just to try and double the labor force, that would increase, or has the potential of increasing the project quite a bit? Am I correct? Mr. Bench, maybe you can answer that?
Brook Bench, Parks and Recreation. Yes, it would. We would definitely, knowing that, when we talked to our, when we got our estimates from the engineering firm that we chose, obviously, if you have them, as you found out, that working nights and weekends definitely adds to the price, and we wanted to have as long of the working days as we possibly could, and so that's why we had the 12 to 12.
Okay, thank you very much. And Mr. Bench, do you believe that this would cause a significant delay to getting the Civic Center demolished at this point in time?
Brook Bench, Parks and Rec. I do. Just knowing that, how long it took us, we've been working on this project from starting back with the auction. It's been about a two-year process to get us to where we're at right now. We did have the auction and other things in there, but it is actually costing the Parks Department an average of about $25,000 a month to, for how long, for every, well, that's what it's costing us now, but if we delay it, that's what we will continue to pay. So for us to get the ball rolling, I know De novo would like to get the abatement going, you know, within a week or so, and then around April 1st, they would have equipment in town where they would start the demolition, and they also have, they would really like to get in and to get the project done. I want to put a timeline on it, but they do have an aggressive timeline that they would like to meet, and I think that would be great for the downtown and for the future development.
So in addition to a delay of the project, we're also spending $25,000 a month on the project, so it's going to cost taxpayers actually additional money in addition to the delay, is that right?
That is correct.
At this point in time, if we, if we voted no on this contract, I mean, the only reason I think we could vote no would be the, because of the failure to have an SEB requirement, and if that's the case, we didn't have an SEB requirement for any of the bidder. So I think we would have to deny all the bids. I don't think we could just give it to the second bidder. Is that right, Ms. Peters?
If you are, Michelle Peters, Deputy City Attorney, if you articulate as that, if that's your basis for the denial of this bid, then that would go back to Parks, and they would have to then reject all bids for that basis.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. I have nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just had a few things to address. I wasn't really going to speak, but a couple of things got my attention. First was the issue that arose with regard to this potential additional extra work that could be available for the parking garage. Ms. Peters, if you could address, is there anything in the bid documents that talked about the possibility of additional work in the area of the demolition site, such as this parking garage? Or in the absence of that, is there anything in the law that you're aware of that prohibits that?
I am not aware, I, my recollection of the specifications indicate that the parking garage is to be maintained, and that's within the scope of work in the specifications as written. So I'm not exactly clear what Mr. Becker was alluding to as to additional work. We have, as you know, we pulled the original specifications, came up with clearer, more specific specs, had a lot of drawings, plans. I think that De novo will tell you, and the other bidders will tell you, that the plans were very clean, and that, of course, we can't ever say that there's not going to be change orders, but at this point in time, they feel confident that it would be very unusual unless they, you know, dig up something underground that's unforeseen. They feel that the specifications and the plans and drawings that have been submitted are very clean and very clear, so...
So the work is, and the scope of the project is to disconnect the entry walkway from the garage to the Civic, but, and then repair the disconnect site from the garage, right?
That's correct, and that would be, you know, one of the last things that's probably completed.
So you're not aware of anything beyond that, and it would seem to me that if there were, it'd be something that the redevelopment team that's negotiating with the city would have in the scope of their redevelopment agreement, to be negotiated with the city, right?
That would be my understanding, yes.
Mr. Bench, are you aware of anything on the parking garage different from that?
Brook Bench, Parks? No, I'm not.
Are you aware of anybody that would have told this De novo otherwise?
No, not that I'm aware of.
So to the extent that they're saying that they may have been informed by who, it doesn't say, that there may be additional other work beyond disconnecting the walkway and repairing or restoring the disconnect site, there's nothing you're aware of?
No, nothing, not that I'm aware of.
All right, thank you. In terms of the, the construction, too, that, Ms. Melton, the round-the-clock approach that Mr. McGruder said, while it is, you know, intriguing that that might be possible, one thing that we dealt with in other areas of the city, at least I've had to deal with constituent concerns that have come in, is when we've had contractors that work before seven in the AM, or after, I think it's 7:00 PM in the evening, there are ordinances that address when work can be done in this city, and so if you're trying to get around those ordinances, then you're going to draw the ire of the residents in the area who, whose piece is disturbed during the construction, rightfully so, because we have these ordinances that prohibit the hours, or restrict the hours of when work can be done. In this particular case, you have residents at 19th and Dodge, 19th and Capitol, you have the Creighton students in the tower just north of Central High School, so we have literally probably around 400 to 500 people within two blocks of this site that I think should be concerned about around the clock operation. So I don't think, for my purposes, given that ordinance, the cost that you addressed, or the noise that would be associated, that that's a fair thing to do. In terms of the process on the small emerging small business ordinance that we have, as we pointed out last meeting, several of us, it was concerning to us that this didn't get included in the bid documents here, but nonetheless, wanted to kind of look at the contractor eye to eye. Your attorney's done a nice job, your sheet as to what you're voluntarily agreeing to do without the requirement, notwithstanding that, is laudable, in my opinion. And that leads me to two things. First, we have been assured by the Parks Director that this process oversight won't happen again. We have people that the Public Works Department have agreed, that to the extent they can help mentor or work with Parks to help educate them going forward. We've had the HRR Director say he's willing to help, too. So I have the assurance and the peace of mind that I need as a council member, that this won't happen again, that this process will be corrected. So as Mr. Festerson says, it's not dependent upon the people, it's dependent upon the procedures in place, so that it doesn't happen again. But that leads me to New Horizons. So are you Stephanie?
No.
Okay, Stephanie's the owner. She's not here today, but if one of you could come up, I notice on the materials provided, you're from 12th and D Streets? Is that your headquarters on this sheet from the state mailing? If that's not, it says 1201 D Street, Lincoln. Where are you Tier One, or Tier, excuse me, Tier Two based in Omaha? It says you're a Tier Two small emerging. Are you not in the city? You're from Lincoln? How do you get connected to Certified here? You just from Lincoln, applied here? How does that work?
We're from Lincoln, we have Omaha Crew that's here, we have people that work in Omaha.
So how many employees do you have in the Omaha area? It's a part of your operation.
Right now, we probably have six or seven employees.
Are these trained, or have to be certified to do the work that you do?
Correct.
And then how many will you have working on the job?
We'll probably have 20 working on the job.
So you have six or seven from Omaha, you'll have 14 or so from other places around Nebraska, Western Iowa, too, I would suppose.
Correct.
And they'll be working, for how long do you estimate it will take to complete the abatement?
Approximately four and a half to five months.
And it's for 25% approximately of the overall project cost, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. With that, I guess the last thing I'd like to talk about is, we've already had Ms. Peters address the legal side of whether there's any reason based upon what's been said to reject the bid, so that's been answered. But I would just note the highly competitive nature of this particular bid, and how far we've come compared to months ago when they advertised this, and there were no responsive proposals. So we've gone from no interest to several companies' interest, and the lawyers involved, impressive legal work by both sides. I mean, I think both clients are fortunate to have lawyers, they did. Mr. Becker is always thorough, and Mr. Weideman, it's been years since I've run across you in the law practice, but it's good to see you again, and you always do a nice job for your clients. So from my observation, the concerns I have, or had, and I said needed to be addressed, have been, and I'm comfortable not rejecting this and following the recommendation of the Law Department.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I was one of the ones that also expressed concern about process last week, and I think other council members have covered that topic today sufficiently, but I do think it is important that we're not dependent upon the people in place, but the process in place to guarantee this kind of outcome. And so I think we're sending the message today that we expect that to occur, and not just on traditional construction projects, but on all major city projects where that can be viable. One last question I had, outside of that line of question that we really haven't covered yet, because we've been so focused on the SEB component of this, which is important, but that we did cover in our Finance Committee, is how we're paying for this. So I wanted to engage Mr. Curtis just in a couple of questions that we talked about in our committee meetings. So originally, we thought, in seeking the demolition or redevelopment of the Civic, that the redevelopment could provide the opportunity to demolish it without cost to the city, but I think we found, obviously, that to be different, and had found that it could be more expensive than we originally thought. Is that a correct assessment?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. I think law was more involved in the final determination of that, whether or not it should be included in the original bid or moved to a separate item.
Okay, I'll ask them that question first, and I'll come back to you. Mr. Kratz?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. As I recall, the original proposal with the, I guess with, we selected Tetrad, they were going to do the demolition. We determined, looking at it, that it might be more advantageous that the city do it, and then we went down that path and hence the bid for the demolition.
But it is accurate to say, we originally thought it would not be a cost to the city, right?
I think it was some very rough estimates at the time, that the amount of money we could receive from the salvage would equal or come close to what the demolition cost would be.
Right. As opposed to the $3.1 million we're looking at today?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Also, let me add, but on the other hand, with the bid with Tetrad, their proposals, I recall, to pay for the site was going to be less than the, would deduct the cost of the demolition, so I guess we pay for it either now or pay for it later.
It's also a factor in whatever negotiations you're currently, or have, have been in with the prospective developer.
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Curtis, then back to you on the $3.1 million. So knowing that we have to spend that money, or that's what's proposed in this agenda item, we talked about, where's the source of funding coming from? And I believe the answer is $2.5 million in a TIF fund that, I guess for lack of a better word, is left over from the First National Bank Tower development project, and then also $600,000 from our redevelopment bonds. Is that correct?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. Yeah, that's the way, about a year ago, when we figured out we needed to come up with this funding source, we put it in the CIP, used a projected surplus in a TIF fund, and then redevelopment bonds to the $204 million, so we carried that forward into this.
And is, does the $2.5 million in the TIF funds, is that exhaust what's left over from the First National Tower project?
Yes, and in fact, we don't have that closed yet, so we'll, we'll be closing that soon. That's the projected balance.
And can be used, because it's within the immediate vicinity and its public improvements, right?
Yeah, in actuality, whatever's left there, we're still working with legal to get the final determination on what's really left in there. Whatever is there would be really a repayment to us for money that we used on the First National Tower years ago, or in the surrounding area.
Okay. And the $600,000 in redevelopment bonds, that doesn't further impede that fund for future potential projects, right?
Well, as we've talked about, those are fairly specifically legally prescribed funds that can be used for a fairly limited amount of things, but this would be one of those things, and as we've talked about in recent weeks, we've got about $10 million of capacity right now, additional capacity.
Up and above this, and up and above what's being proposed for the Performing Arts Center, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There are no more lights. Let me say a couple of things, just in terms of being transparent to council members and others, in our, in our Human Rights and Relations Department committee meeting, there will be some, there will be some items coming forward, I think, that will address even further and tighten up some of the loose ends that continue to exist with the SEB ordinance. There's some things that we need to tighten up. Among them, needs to be a little bit more oversight and control by the Human Rights and Relations Department. We're going to be looking at that. So there will probably be a couple of amendments that will be coming forward to address, you know, some of the, some of the holes that we see in the SEB ordinance, so that will be coming forward. But as, as far as I'm concerned as well, in having conversations with De novo yesterday, and the conversations today, and the questions and so forth, the concerns that I have have also been addressed, and, you know, I think it's really just time to move forward, so... No more lights? Is there a motion?
I'd like to, is the public allowed to comment?
Well, a public hearing's been held already. Is there, is there a second? Moved and seconded, no further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gernat?
No.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
30 is adopted. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items number 31 through 40 shall be held on the third reading. Ordinance on second reading, item 41, ordinance vacating the north eight feet of Gerby Street from West Rightaway Lion of 28th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item 41 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed, next item.
Item 42, ordinance authorizes the issue of purchase order of Alamar uniforms for a 12-month price agreement for purchase of uniforms for street maintenance and sewer maintenance divisions.
Public hearing on agenda item 42 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed, next item.
43, ordinance proving a redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with JHD for the implementation of the Woolworth Lofts Tax and Refinancing Reinvestment Project Plan for a project site located at 1114 Howard Street.
Public hearing on agenda item 43 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed, next item.
Item 44, ordinance to accept the bid A and L and L to furnish all labor, materials, and equipment to perform ground maintenance, Cold Creek Corridor.
Public hearing on agenda item 44 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed, next item.
45, ordinance to amend an existing Class B flammable...
45, ordinance to amend an existing Class B flammable liquid storage district, B 186, at First Data Resources to increase the total capacity.
Public hearing on agenda item number 45 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
46, ordinance to establish a new Class B flammable liquid storage district, B 193, at 4626 Diamond Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda item 46 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Ordinance to approve, 47, ordinance to approve in a contract with ASAE, the Center for Association Leadership for Promotion, for promoting the city of Omaha.
Public hearing on agenda item 47 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 48, special ordinance levying a special tax for litter, group number 2016-01.
Public hearing on agenda item 48 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
49, special ordinance levying a special tax for the cutting and clearing of weeds, grass, and worthless vegetation, group number 2016-02.
Public hearing on agenda item 49 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
50, special ordinance levying a special tax for cutting and clearing weeds and grass and worthless vegetation, groups number 2016-03.
Public hearing on agenda item number 50 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Pursuant City Council Rule 7H, the public hearing in third reading on agenda item number 51 shall be held on February 23rd. Pursuant City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on agenda item number 52 shall be held on the second reading.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We stand adjourned at 3:11 P.M.